We may, we may even refresh our course at the retreat.
Well, right, and I think that's probably a good idea because you'll have had a few months of doing things. And maybe, maybe it will be bumpy and maybe it is a matter of, I mean.
That's why you're here.
You'll have, you'll have, you also have, you'll have a different mayor. Who I thought was your.
He was stepped out for a moment, but.
Yes, for the most important part, so.
No, he just walked out.
So the things, yeah, so as we operate in January, it is going to be a little different.
Well, we'll get, we'll get one month of practice on our belts in December this year.
We got to make up cheat sheets.
Yeah.
Yay.
That'll be a big.
That's how I got to the spoon. I have a retreat lotion too, since you got a lot of pressure up here.
Yeah, just from an operational point of view, I think that's.
So we're talking to you. Those three people are gonna be gone.
Yeah, what can I say? All right, is there anything else? Are there any questions from council administration regarding the changes? I thank, thank you very much for showing up here tonight and giving us the comprehensive tour of the things we're gonna need to do.
Can I, can I ask you this? Can we jump down to the rules of council and ask them to stay just for a brief discussion?
Sure.
And then, and then I was gonna say, you might as well, I would encourage you to go home to your family.
Okay.
And not stay for refuse collection.
Oh, well, yeah, I didn't see that, yeah.
Moving on to our rules of council then.
Maria talked to me about this, you know, we, we talked about, I had talked earlier in 2013 about the potential to move the council meeting off of the first Tuesday because we don't have financial information. We're making financial decisions that are, sometimes it's dated, we could have fresher. And in the charter, it says that council establishes when council meetings are gonna be, obviously, we want them on way across. Is it, is it appropriate to, for council members to have discussion, those that are elected and not elected, to find out the schedules and what works well? Are we limiting that discussion anywhere from sunshine laws?
Let me think, sunshine law issue is when you have a pre-arranged discussion of the business of the body by majority of the members.
I'm worried about, you know, I don't want to have a discussion about refuse collection and call each one of them and say, here's, because that defeats the open meeting spirit of the law, and I'm not looking to do that, but is it inappropriate for one council person to say, what's your preferred night to meet and what's your?
Right, here's what I would say, I, I think that that is, that, that is appropriate because it's not really anything, it's not business that's, that's.
Not decide a contract.
Technically, he's not talking to council members.
Yeah. Right, that's, that's true. This is the magic, this is the magic window and, yeah, you can, you can, you can't talk.
Cranley can do anything, apparently.
Right, but what I, what I would say, what I would say to that is, and you've made the point, is that it's in your rules of council now of when the meetings are. So to change the meeting schedule, it would take modifying the rules of council. And, and we've been through that process before, so modifying the rules of council does take public, you know, discussion here. Now, if you are saying, is it appropriate to make phone calls to say, is the first Tuesday or second Tuesday or whatever day gonna work for you? I don't, I don't see that as any type of violation. But when you, when it comes down to actually deliberating and discussing the, the actual rule amendment, the rules themselves say you have to do that.
My sense is, is that we will, what my intention would be is to talk to everybody that will be on council in 2014, have the first meeting on the first Tuesday and pass new rules of council. And if it's, we keep the same schedule as determined by council, then that's what we'll do, and if we change it, then, then that's what we'll do.
So, I mean, that, if that's a piece of business on the first meeting anyway, is to adopt the rules of council every year, so.
So would you say he's just polling, you're just polling the other council members to see if this day is better or that day is, day is better?
Yes, and I'll tell you, what I would say is, it's, it's really no different than council right now saying, boy, we really need to have a special council meeting so that we can finalize the budget or whatever. So I'm gonna call other council members to see what day they're available. That's, I don't think, as long as that's all you're talking about, saying, hey, are you available this day at this time? I don't see that as any violation.
Well, since Maria isn't here and since I'm co-chair of laws and rules, I think she wanted to put something in the rules of council about, I'll discuss that tonight, about committees. And maybe, maybe committees be obliged to attend some seminars or get some training about rules of parliamentary procedure and sort of conduct their meetings in a more orderly fashion. But like I told Maria, I'm not sure that's a place for rules of council, that's something, if we're gonna do that, you know, and do some training as part of the retreat, that we do as part of the retreat, I don't know whether necessarily it has to be in a rule of council or if that's even a place to put it, if we do it, but.
Well, you know, the Ohio municipal league offers training for new council members that some members have taken advantage of, some haven't. The parliamentarians, Kathy, you guys are having your?
January 25th.
January 25th, so I, for the new council members, for members of.
Committee members.
Well, that is, it's for new council members, current council members.
And commissioners.
Commission members, I think all of them could benefit on attending the parliamentarians' training that they're gonna have, I guess it's gonna be up at the, up at Fort, the Fort Park Senior Center. A great program, I had learned a lot every time I went to it. And there's still a lot to learn, so I, I would encourage everyone to attend it and.
So make that happen, I just want to communicate.
I appreciate, I appreciate the spirit of having well-trained people run meetings. What I, I got a little bit of angst about is making it mandatory to go to something on the January 25th when you may be. May or may not be, I, I would encourage everyone that can to attend it. And we probably should communicate that to the, you know, the assorted commission members.
Are you saying commission members, like recreation commission, those people that are on the?
Pated commission.
Or not.
I'm thinking of the person that chairs the meeting so that they know how to run a meeting with something that resembles Robert's Rules of Orders and parliamentary procedure and, you know, they ask for a motion and a second and a vote.
Yeah, and it's worthwhile, and you know, if we left it to the, you know, I honestly, I think planning, all of planning should go. Honest, I do. The BZA, they should probably go, all of them, I think it's important for them, particularly BZA, because they're quasi-judicial body. Their decisions are, you know, it's essentially a court of your fellow citizens. And it'd be very important for them to attend those meetings. The recommission, I think it's a different story, chairman of the recommission, whoever's chair of those meetings probably should go. Yeah, Ben's, January 25th, what is that, Kathy?
That's a Saturday.
Okay. Would be at the Fort Park.
Yeah, we will be getting the flyers out on that toward the middle, middle to the end of December.
Now, how long is that? Two hours, three hours?
It's three hours.
Oh, okay, in the morning or afternoon?
Morning.
That's a Saturday.
That's right.
It may be four hours, it may be eight to me.
Okay.
Yeah, but they had orange juice and donuts, as I recall.
Yeah.
They're the major food groups. Yeah. They bought, so that's a third one, so.
Yeah.
Okay, dads, that, we have any questions?
I don't have any more questions.
Rules of council, our.
I don't think any council boards or.
Our, all right, you're free to go, sir, thank you so very much, thank you. Uh, finance, streets and services aggregation, should we talk aggregation aggravation?
Okay, is that time of year, I think we've talked about this a couple of years.
Jared, hi, Johnson.
And right now.
Just wait, just wait till end of the month.
Yeah.
Couple of times now, I've told council about the deadlines that we're facing with our renewal for both our gas and our electric. And so the bids have been received and Mark Burns was down last week and presented the results to me. I'll start with gas, which is IGS, looks like this, this one. Because that's the easier one, well, not really, very complicated. This is the one, if you remember, is based on a formula, it's not just a flat rate, it's gonna save kind of thing, but he is recommending that we stay with IGS after the bids, to take a two-year term, that'll lock in a formula which is slightly better than the current formula we've had, which is also very good. And it ties us to a mandatory, mandatory opt-out requirement every two years. If you remember, this is the one that we, we did like a year and then we did a two-year to get on the cycle, so we'd also be with a bigger group of people, which is, so we'll want to try to stay with that, so. If you turn to the second page, where it starts getting kind of complex, but I put a star in it to the scenario that he is recommending, which is that last one, the 24-month term. You can do, this is again based on a, a formula which, these are all the elements of the formula that you're, that you're, if you read it across, that they work into it. If you turn to the next page, towards the bottom, they actually show you how you use all those in the formula to come up with the rate that you're gonna have. The little chart he has above on that third page shows the NYMEX, which is the, the rate that they're using in the formula. And he's comparing it to the new formula, the current formula in the middle, and then the savings. And so under any scenario, our, our current formula is very good, but the new rate is even better, which will result in a little bit larger savings for those who are participating in programs, so. That one's pretty, that guy, I believe, to review with IGS for two more years. And that would be an item that would be under December council agenda. Now, let's look at electric.
And citizens are automatically enrolled unless, unless they opt out, so.
Opt out early, right, and in fact, what this will, what they'll do again is they get lists from Duke because during the, they'll, they'll be able to opt out period for anybody who maybe wasn't on the program and wants to get on the program, they'll have that opportunity. Or again, people have the opportunity to opt out if they want. Still believe, from all I'm hearing, we have the best rate.
So what, how do these rates compare to Duke's current rates?
Oh, there are, let's see, I don't know if he gave us a sheet in there. Better, this, the gas is the one where we did not do a fixed rate, we took it that he, he picks it. You know, they, they monitor it and then select the best rate for any given month, so it varies. And, and I think like 18 out of the last 24 months, they were better than Duke. So gas is a little hard to quantify in that manner, but their performance has been very good in that regard. And if at any time, if he or said it's dropping, he can fix it at any point, but we stayed on the fluctuating.
So does Duke operate the same way as far as?
No, no, they don't.
The exception rate is fixed rate.
I believe so.
Gas recently has gone down.
I really couldn't answer that question, but if I give you the next one, I could tell you that I guess, I guess both of them are gonna go up, which is why he's recommending, and the next one, you'll see for a three-year agreement to, during those three years, it's expected, something's going to go way up, so we're, we'll be locking in a rate on the electric. And you know, if I remember right, sorry, this is really complex, this is why we have a consultant handle this issue. I think he said that all electric is generated by natural gas anyway, and that's why they will both trend upwards. So if we can lock in our electric rate, we won't feel the impact.
Good, that's, that's diminishing.
Anyway, but let's switch real quick.
But he's gonna stay on the gas, he's gonna stay on the picking it month to month scale for that.
Now, on the other one, the electric, which is the one that's in color, I want you to see the different items, which is why I wanted, highlighted it, I, I, the first energy solution down towards the bottom, 36-month, 5.36, is the one that is being recommended. Just to hop back up, I did, I gave you the ones with my handwritten notes as we met, Duke is currently at five, we are currently at 5.6, Duke is at 6.1, this rate's even better at 5.36, so we're pretty excited about that. Now, this one, you remember, there was a civic donation that we did not take the last time. However, Mark's recommending it and I'm, I'm recommending it as well, and the little chart on the bottom right there is, is really the reason why. We're looking at a 5.36 rate versus a 5.33 over the period of 36 months. That's a cumulative savings of $3,000 if we pass that extra three pennies to the residents. However, and how they calculate their formula.
Hundreds of a cent, yeah, it's three hundreds of a cent.
Oh, sorry, yes, it is. How they calculate their formula, it would be a $9,500 contribution to the village, because they do that based on the number of users, so point being that the, we get a significant amount of money for the, what's being foregone, if you want to perceive it that way, by residents is, is a lot smaller. I think that's.
Yes.
We're gonna gain $9,000, it's gonna cost all the residents collectively $3,000.
Correct. And, and it really won't cost them anything, they're still gonna be getting a, a much lower rate with the new rate, instead of being 5.33, it would be 5.36.
And if residents don't like it, they can still opt out.
Oh, they, they could, can, but they're gonna have an even bigger savings with it than they have right now.
Yeah, so if they're even, right.
And, and he, civic donation makes more sense with the longer terms, the money to the general fund is greater than the savings foregone by residents, so.
That's not contribution, I think.
The other thing that they like in this, that we like in this proposal is that if Duke's rate would drop lower in over the three-year period that we have, First Energy is willing to reduce their rate to match Duke's, or if they feel they can't do that, they're willing to send everybody back to the Duke's supply at no penalty. So we like that plausible lies.
Okay, just for comparison, the 5.36 cents per kilowatt hour versus the 5.33 cents per kilowatt hour, looks like it's about $3.22, 24 cents for the average resident that's consuming 10,800 kilowatt hours per year.
Right, difference. Three dollars. Three bucks a year for the village to gain not over $9,000.
Right. And we, we do have some higher costs associated with administrative, it's just a way to capture a little bit of that.
And as Yvonne said, and compared to last year, it's still better, or actually saving money even with the three cents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's even better than what we had, so that's pretty good.
All right. Is that all?
Okay.
Okay, so the.
I'll have legislation for you in December.
December, so this will be a resolution.
We'll get to do a resolution, we've practiced.
All right, who gets it? Me, I guess, right? Is that finance, I'm guessing it's coming through?
Yeah, I guess so.
All right, fair enough.
First one screwed up.
Services and streets, okay.
And that piece that they'll match Duke is huge.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the fact that if they can't match Duke, that they'll just go ahead, that's good.
All right.
Okay.
Last item of the night, aggregation.
Aggregation, oh, no, you mean refuse collection.
Refuse collection.
And actually, we're, we don't have to have this approved until early next year, but we're entering into the first year of a one-year renewal on our Rumpkey contract, which has been very, very good. And our rate is going up slightly this year and it'll go up a little bit more next year, but the real difference is in our, I guess there was just some misunderstanding on the part of Rumpkey way back when this was originally bid, that we ended up with an extremely incredibly low rate for recycling. Which is currently in place or remain in place until 2016, we're gonna do a contract. Now, a couple of issues that are coming up in, we'll, we'll never see a rate like we have been. He, I had a meeting with the Rumpkey gentleman Dean Barrier, and he said that we can expect it to go up to the 1250, 1275 category. Individual, the subscription, I think they call it, recycling won't, won't happen anymore, you know, things are a lot different. And we talked about some different ways that maybe we can order a contract and even over away from, we might want to be thinking about these over the next couple of years to figure out what's gonna be the best way for us to go, but. One proposal that he made that I told him I would bring to you tonight is, you know, a lot of our residents have expressed an interest in getting maybe like a, a rolling recycling, which we do have available now, but they'd all love to have it, but that isn't gonna happen until 2016 with our new contract. But we currently have a 75-cent rate for the red bins that they would be willing to extend to for us to do, provide everybody with a red bin and then pay the 75 cents. That, that is an increase for us because we collect right now, we have about 397. As of the last bill, we have people recycling with the red bins, other people rent the rolling bins from, from Rumpkey, but to our current bill, that would add $14,706 if we wanted to get all of our residents recycling right now. So that was their offer, and going in 2016, regardless of what we do now, we can stay right where we are and not get people used to it, but the recycling portion of our bid in 2016 will probably go up to about $54,000. So the more you can do to get your people used to recycling, your residents, our residents to recycle, another element of those bids will probably be, it will perhaps be based on tonnage, so if you are recycling more, your tonnage to be, don't goes down, your charges go down. I'm sure you've been reading and hearing about these things anyway, so I, I guess the thing for you to be thinking about right now is, is do we want to start encouraging that and incur the additional cost? Just to go up to 2016, but as we go, be developing ways to encourage the residents to recycle in creative ways that we can do our bid.
How much is it gonna cost? The resident, the increase in the recycling.
Oh, well, we, we don't, we don't know for sure in 2016, but it will probably be sizable. If, if we're not passing it on to the resident, that portion would probably be in the neighborhood of $54,000.
What do we pay now?
Well, right now, we, we are, we bill our residents who recycle a dollar a month.
Yeah, right.
So that's, you know, kind of paying for itself. The recycling, because they only charge us for those who, it's, it's called subscription, they only are charging us for those.
How many people do we have on subscription?
397.
Times 12.
Yeah, what the, yeah, that's.
Bro, less than $5,000.
No, we're doing it.
So.
We're billing residents for a dollar a month.
Oh, you're billing 12, 12, we do it for a year.
Annual.
Yeah, $12 a year.
Oh, you're billing me.
Right.
You don't recycle?
You get the red bin.
You don't recycle? What's wrong with your boy?
I just threw it in the woods.
Oh, that's where you're.
But there are, there are others who are renting their, their roller directly from Rumpkey.
I don't think you're. But compared to $12 annually that we charge for the red bin, how much are we thinking that's going to increase? That's the way I would first.
That, that will increase, recycling out there right now is, is up to 275, 280.
A lot.
But we've got it for 75 cents, so we're, we're in a really good position right now, that's, that's going to go up.
So you could, obviously, and I know we just carried up and put in more recycling upstairs. That's how we do that, so we manage our recycling and not give it to Rumpkey every month. So anyway, I guess there's a lot of ways we can skin that cat.
Who, who pays for the recycling, recycling depositors?
The drop-offs we do.
We pay for them.
And they are used heavily, frankly.
That's Rumpkey also.
Getting an award tomorrow because of our residents are. Thank you.
We don't want to have anything that I used to put in discouraging if the rates gonna go.
Oh, my God.
Right, right, anything you do to encourage recycling would be a good thing, so I, and this isn't anything we have to decide right now, but I want you to be aware of it, be keen about it, and.
So in 2016, it will be, it starts then?
Yeah, why don't you go to mid-2015?
Okay.
Yeah, to give a little background, Rumpkey did make a mistake in their bid, and, and we did this with three other communities. And since Springdale had a lot more muscle than we did, and Springdale, Loveland, is Loveland part of our bid back, and I can't remember. But anyway, prior to that last contract, we, residents were paying $24 a year for recycling. The village was subsidizing that on top of that, so I think recycling was maybe $3 a month per resident before we went to what we're doing now, so we had big savings even to the village because we were subsidizing recycling. So, but they, you know, they wanted to not follow through with the contract of the thing. They'd made the mistake and they wanted to back out of it, and then we put pressure on them and then they agreed to, which was kind of surprising.
There you go. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah, it is.
I know it is.
So we'll talk more about that over the coming months.
Okay.
Gentlemen, is there anything else?
What do you think, guys?
I like it.
Would that be a resolution, do we have to do a resolution or?
That would be a resolution.
Well, if it didn't cost us anything, who, what's the motive, who's the motivator?
The recommendation.
No.
This might sound sad.
Oh.
I mean, do we really, do you really need this at all?
It's going on public land, yeah, council should probably agree to the display of a more.
Yeah, money's being donated for the, for this, for this grant.
Is it bronze?
Yeah, it's a number here.
Yeah, that'd be another resolution.
Okay. Please.
Give her the map. Give her a picture and a map.
Oh, here, I'll give her mine.
Okay.
Well, you don't need the picture. The, the Legion guys know about this?
I think so, yes.
Would you, as I told, I'm 100% for, it's, I think it's great. The only thing I thought to think through was the placement where we want it, do we want it by one of the other memorials, do we want it by itself? Does that kind of make the commons feel like it's a big memorial? Or do we keep it closer to one of the other ones? Does it kind of restrict anything that we're gonna do later, kind of like?
You know, you, you could put it right in the middle of the shadow pole walkway, too, and that would be, I think. You know, you could put it right in the middle of the Shadow Pole Walkway too, and that would be, I think, a nice vision. It would fit there in a lesson.
On the Shadow one?
Yeah.
We're not there for the shadow, the pole's in the middle, right?
No, the pole's on one edge. Kind of, the, the pole fetches roughly one, the sort of southern part because the sun's coming from that direction.
Oh, okay.
You know, you can go by and check it out, but you ought to talk to the Leachon guys.
Okay.
I can talk to a landscape architect.
So I, you know, putting it someplace on the commons, I think is a great idea.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Instead of just exercising entropy and trying to spread everything out as much as possible, perhaps you should think about location. You know, I don't know symmetrically how it would fit at the World War II Memorial. Because, I mean, that's, the obelisk gets all, everything's nice symmetric there. You know, over by the the Shadow Pole Walk could be a good place.
Would that be involved with, about the shadowing of the poller?
You know, I don't know. You could, we, we can, I believe that could probably be simulated without too much trouble. But I suspect you could find a spot. I don't know, how tall is that?
By the time it's sitting on the pier, it might be about five foot.
Five foot, I don't think. That's something to be, something to be considered.
I'll bet you a dollar Jeff Alder will have something to say about that. Some input.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of stupid.
Yeah, this is, well, this is, yeah, and this is just thick, but I think doing it is a perfectly wonderful thing.
Me too. I'd be afraid that it's donated. Wow.
It's fine with me, but it's a neat idea.
Okay. The biggest thing I'll do is just let them know that they can start actually making it, that they were going to be making it the bronze during the winter time to make it available to do something within the spring.
Okay.
I think that would be plaque on with the names of the council people that approve it.
Yeah.
Made our mark.
Sassy in his short time, isn't he?
Yeah, there you go. All right. If, if there's nothing else, I would entertain the motions with adjourn.
And you like Amber.
Sir, second?
Second.
There are no objections, we stand adjourned.